For the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone please remain standing. You have to ask Pastor Brooks from the temple come get some prayer.
Spire heads and pray. God our Father, Jesus our Savior, Holy Spirit our Keeper. We invite your presence into this place as we handle the affairs of the city. Your word instructs us to pray for those in governmental authority. So we lift up before you our mayor, Mayor Byron Nolan. We lift up before you the city council, the civic officials, and all the citizens of the city of Inkster. Your word instructs us how good and how pleasant it is for brothers and sisters to dwell together in unity. So Father God, we pray for your grace. We pray for your strength. We pray for your prosperity of these that lead our city. And may those that seek for the prosperity of Inkster be blessed in all that they say and do, as we unite behind one city, one love, one cause. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Roll call.
Mayor Nolan.
Present.
Councilwoman Watley.
Present.
Councilman Oden.
Present.
Councilwoman Mitchell.
Present.
Councilwoman Howard.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Williams.
Present.
And Councilman Chisholm.
Present.
We have seven present today and we do have a corner.
Everyone had a chance to look over the agenda. Any additions, deletions? Delete what?
B. Item B.
Oh, you don't want to do it? Okay. All right. We're going to delete item B. We're not going to vote on that until we get more information on the equipment. We'll do it. We'll deal with that at the next meeting. So that leaves us just one item under new business. Okay. Anything we need to add? We have a motion? Agenda. Or any discussion? You lost it? Okay. Well, we have to move forward. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. No presentations tonight, no public hearings tonight. Consent agenda. Everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? Any additions, deletions? You got a motion?
Make a motion. We accept the agenda as presented.
Board, properly moved, supported, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes. Boards and commissions. Okay. We have a couple people left from last week.
Yep. Tanya Williams needs to be appointed to the Brownfield redevelopment and also to the Parks and Recreation Commission. And we do have our items that I sent out.
All right. Everyone receive resume and information on Ms. Williams. Okay. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to reappoint Tanya Williams to the Brownfield Commission and to the...
You got to vote from the same time or?
You got to do it separate.
To Brownfield.
The board. Properly moved, supported, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It passes.
I would like to reappoint Tanya Williams to the Park and Rest Commission.
Properly moved and supported, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes. Any other nominations for boards and commissions?
One nomination, guys, is a family from rolling.
No nominations, but there's a portion in the boards and commissions we need to address because Michigan state law and which is under requires that an architect be on the commission.
Which one?
No, it's the Construction Board of Appeals.
Oh. Anybody know a good architect?
They can't hear us, colleagues, so please speak out loud. The Construction Board of Appeals, according to Michigan state law, which was drafted under, needs an architect on that commission. So we're just putting it out there. If we have any Inkster residents who are retired architects, must be an Inkster resident. So that's what we're talking about.
Anybody know a architect?
Need a good architect? Yes.
How soon do you need to know?
Oh, next meeting?
That'll be fine.
Okay. Anything else under boards and commissions?
Oh, yeah. Let me talk about this. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ms. Charmaine Kennedy to the Tifer Board. She was appointed to the EDC, but she wasn't appointed to.
Okay. Yeah, I remember that. Everyone received her resume and stuff? I remember seeing hers. You prepared to go forward and vote on that tonight?
Yes.
Okay, we have a second?
I support.
Okay. Any discussion? All right. Remember who she is? Okay. Charmaine Kennedy. Tifer. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It passes. Any other nominations? Okay, we'll go down to ordinances. Second reading.
Counsel to offer a second reading on an amendment to chapter 155 zoning court of ordinances per the recommendation of the planning commission.
Okay.
Mayor, pursuant to the conversation held in the orientation there, proposed text changes to section 155284 that need to be noted for the record. The first one is in section 155284, sub-paragraph B, which reads, "Permits for new use of land. Certificate of occupancy required. No land heretofore shall vacate shall hereafter be used or an existing use of land be hereafter changed to a use of a different class or type unless a certificate of occupancy or a certificate of reoccupancy is first obtained for the new or different use." The second proposed change should read as follows in section 155.285. The title should be changed to "Certificate of Occupancy" and "Certificate of Reoccupancy." And it should reflect that way all the way through that subsection. The third is subsection 155.288. The title should be changed "Procedures for Special Land Use Review." And should be identified throughout the text of that subsection. And then the final one is section 155.289. The title should be changed to "Standards for Special Land Use Approval." And likewise should be changed throughout the subsection of that paragraph.
Okay. Is that all the changes?
Yes.
We're going to new business.
Consideration to offer a second reading and consider approval of an amendment to chapter 155 zoning court of ordinances per the recommendation of the planning commission.
You have a motion? Some move? We probably move, supported, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. That is all under new business. So we go now to public participation. So first person is Owen Roper. He filled out two. You get one, three minutes. I just want to let you know. Three. Consolidate.
When do they start? Well, I would be very brief. So at the Michigan Democratic Party convention last weekend, I believe, weekend before last, we had nominations. And our slate won the position for the executive, for the Michigan Democratic Black Caucus. So I'm on the executive board, one of the executive board members of the Michigan Democratic Black Caucus. So one of the things that we're doing with the new administration is we're chartering different cities. And since I work and getting ready to live in Inkster, what better place to start than here in Inkster? So we'll be having our first executive board meeting here in March, as well as the first membership meeting as well, Inkster Democratic Black Caucus. There's a misconception because I've been trying to reach whoever it is that is the administrator for the Inkster Democratic Black Caucus on Facebook, but I, you know, I haven't been able and I know Mr. Mayor, you reply back. There's a difference between the club and the caucus. The caucus week is charter. So that's where we, you know, do grassroots things like in the community as well and build up different resources. So the second thing is we're doing, still doing the Inkster Home Buyers Education seminars and affordable housing and using renewable energy here in Inkster. So one of the things that our goal is, is to get tenants to become homeowners. And that way, once we have the renewable, low-income and affordable, energy-efficient homes put together where a three-bedroom home would cost $26,000, plus the cost of land, which makes it properties back to the tax roll, you know, and we retrofit it so they can also have an energy-efficient vehicle for free. So we're about low-income and affordable housing and changing the game in the face of the city of Inkster and across the country, right here where, you know, where we at. So our next seminar will be in April, and I want, and I'll make sure I'll be able to bring something here to you to pass out as well. So that's, how many more seconds do I have?
Thank you, Mr. Roper.
You're welcome, sir.
Next up is Larry Motley.
Before you too long because you're supposed to have a report by the city attorney to find out what I was talking about when I said that the mayor should give up his seat because of his property was foreclosed on. And that Dee Richardson, her property was not foreclosed on. She was just behind in her taxes. And the mayor, if I can remember what he said at the last meeting was, "Find out what Mr. Motley is talking about so he can get on board and we can go to start working together." I'm willing to work together if we abide by the rules that the mayor set up. Now, he got rid of Dee Richardson. And her taxes have been paid and everything. We made sure of that. And his property has been foreclosed on. And also, there's a matter of the campaign finance laws that the Inkster Charter Commission and the people that was on the flyer for the charter. And there was money used to pay for that. And I just want to know, just like the state of Michigan, I want to know, who paid for that? Who paid for those charter, that advertisement for the charters? And also, you must realize that perjury is a five-year felony. So I'd like to know. So I'd like to hear what the city attorney have to say. And if I'm wrong, if ever I'm wrong, I'll always apologize because it doesn't mean that much to me. I've been in politics for forty-some years. I don't mind apologizing if I'm wrong. And if you can find a law that says, "You know, Mr. Motley, you're wrong," I deal with it. I don't, I don't have any animosity against anybody. I have political enemies, but I don't have any personal enemies because I'm not that type of person. I'm not cut that way. But I just want to hear the report tonight. And I want to see if the mayor will relinquish his seat because he was wrong. Timothy Williams and Sandra Watley, that they were wrong. And Connie Mitchell was wrong, and she should give up her seat because it's not fair and it's unconstitutional that she would take a seat that the people voted for. And the only way you get rid of that person is that person has to be voted out or recalled. So that's my beef. Now, it's up to you all and I'm just, it's my daughter's birthday and I said, "Hey, I'm going to hole up on that birthday because I got to go to council meeting because the attorney have some information and I want to find out if I'm a liar or not."
Mr. Motley, your three minutes are up.
So I'm just waiting for, I want to hear this. And if I'm right, I want, I want the mayor to give up his seat tonight.
Okay, Mr. Motley. The mayor's asked me to speak to the report he asked me to do two weeks ago. And by the way, this is a memo that I did provide by email this afternoon to the mayor. And I copied the council persons and the treasurer on this memo. And I'll just read it verbatim. And I think, I don't know if each council member's had an opportunity to print it out, but it's a memo to Mayor Byron Nolan, city of Inkster, and it's carbon copied to the Inkster City Council. As you know, at the most recent city council meeting held on February 6, 2017, Inkster resident Larry Motley spoke during the public participation phase of the meeting and alleged that you were in violation of the Inkster City Charter by being in, quote, "default," close quote, to the city due to unpaid property taxes. Mr. Motley presented a tax statement dated January 20, 2017, for vacant property allegedly found at 26164 Plum, Inkster, Michigan, 48141. And then I have a footnote at the bottom that indicates the tax statement is addressed to Byron Nolan at 34868 Stewart Drive, Romulus, Michigan, 48174, and indicates that the parcel has been foreclosed. And I attached to this memo Exhibit A, which is the tax statement that Mr. Motley provided to, I believe, council member Howard at the last meeting. And that statement does indicate what I just mentioned. The next paragraph reads, "Pursuant to Wayne County Register deed search, I discovered that the vacant lot at 26164 Plum was transferred by quitclaim deed to Byron Nolan on August 27, 2004, by the Wayne County Treasurer for consideration in the amount of $600. And I attached that deed as Exhibit B. Additionally, it was discovered that on August 21, 2015, the property at issue was forfeited by the county and a judgment of foreclosure was recorded on September 18, 2015, with the Wayne County Register of Deeds. And I attached that deed as Exhibit C. Accordingly, as of August 21, 2015, the property in question on Plum Street in the city of Inkster was again owned by Wayne County. It is undisputed that you were not elected by the citizens of the city of Inkster until November 3, 2015, and you took office in December 2015. And attached as Exhibit D is the unofficial results of the election from November 2015. Therefore, because you did not own property allegedly, owned the property allegedly located at 26164 Plum in the city of Inkster, 48141, in December of 2015, it was and is impossible for you to be in default to the city for those property taxes." And that's the end of the memo. Again, I've provided this to the mayor and each member of council. So essentially, at the time of the election, the property on Plum Street was not owned by Mayor Byron Nolan.
And Mr. Motley, I'll give you a copy of everything so you can take with you tonight.
I don't need that because once you default on property, they don't give it back to you just because that's expected. Dee did not default on her property. She did not. And you took one half of a paragraph of a subsection in the city charter.
You need to do some.
We're going to, we're going to, we're going to move on to the next public comment.
You should step down or I'm going to seek, uh, follow legal action.
Yeah, you do that. Officer Lebo.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor, council, citizens. Real quick, just want to say that the Inkster Police Athletic League is currently seeking volunteers for the startup of the basketball team. Specifically, we need coaches, but any and all volunteers are welcome for all age groups. And anyone that would be interested, please send me an email at alebo@cityofinkster.com. That's A-L-E-B as in boy-O at cityofinkster.com. And also encourage you to check out the department's Facebook page. Put a lot of information out there. That'd be good for the citizens to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Last one is Reverend George Williams.
Let me say this. You know, all the garbage stuff need to stop in this city. You know, I say a lot of great things that's happening in this city, and it's time for those. Even though I got a text from Courtney Orns, who texted me and I, you know, texted me and told me, say, "Well, you know, I have second thoughts about changing the government." I got it right on here. Anybody want to read it when it's over with? I ain't going to read it now because my three minutes is running. But let me say this. Brother Motley has been in this community for many years. But somehow he had to stop the road when it comes down, okay, of attacks. See, first of all, Dee Richardson, I was in court. I went down to court to see. Okay, when I got in the court, the judge gave her, not only, this council gave her ninety days. Okay, gave her ninety days to pay her taxes. Okay, when she went to court, the judge gave her, what, eighteen more days? How many more days? I need to get over the limit. Okay, and so the charter reads what it reads. Okay, when Courtney Orns, at the time that he was on council and he owed it back taxes, they gave him thirty days to pay his taxes. In thirty days, he paid. Okay, you cannot represent a city at all. That's your charter says that. Now you around here trying to get investigated to the state, investigated to the county and all this stuff, it's, read your charter. It's right there. And then for you to accuse the mayor, for you to accuse the mayor is wrong. Mayor had nothing to do with that. The council voted to have it checked out. The council sent her the letter, not the mayor. The mayor's name nowhere on this, on the letter that went her, went to Dee. His name nowhere on it. So quit packing the mayor on this. The council voted, okay, sent her a letter to tell her, "Pay your taxes up. Are you going to be removed?" Now, if I'm lying about it, somebody did correct me.
Excuse me. I don't know council had a vote. I was not involved in that vote and I didn't know the letter was going out. So I don't know how the letter went out without us.
Madam Clerk, madam clerk, will you give her a copy of the minutes?
Sure.
Would you get her a copy of the minutes so she'll know, bring her memory back? Thank you. Thanks. Okay, city clerk.
Do you want me to do this announcement?
What's the announcement?
The Wayne County Airport Authority will be holding its final DTW Master Plan Public Information Meeting. The meeting, the event will take place at Wayne County Community College, 2100 Northline Road in Taylor, Michigan, in the Ray Mix Room on Thursday, March 2, 2017, between 5:00 PM to 7:30 PM. Thank you.
Nothing else? Okay. City treasurer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to remind all the residents and property owners that the deadline for paying property taxes here at the city is on February 28. We can accept payments on the tax year 2017, taxes until that date for both summer and winter. And after the 28th, then the taxes will have to be paid at the county level, down at Wayne County. So again, we can accept payments. The deadline is February 28 for everyone to pay their property taxes here at City Hall. You can come in person and pay, pay online, or we leave a check in the drop box. Also, applications are available for any hardship request related to property tax for the upcoming property tax year beginning July 1 of this year. And then also, the dates have been set for the order review that will be meeting in March for anyone wanting to make an appeal of their property assessment. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Howard.
Just wanted to ask, are we still getting the check registry each month? Check registry?
So that, the check registry, that document was previously required under the consent agreement?
Okay.
It was, it's no longer a part of the regular packet that you're getting on the monthly financials. Mayor Pro Tim did indicate an interest in that. So I can provide that to all the council members. But in answer to your question, we have not been providing that since the city exited out of the consent agreement.
Okay. I would like a copy. Okay, that's it.
Councilwoman Watley.
Uh, yes. First, I'd like to remind everyone that we are in full swing for the 48th Memorial Day Parade in the city of Inkster. We're looking for everyone who participated last year to participate this year, as well as all those who didn't get the opportunity to strut their stuff down Michigan Avenue. Did I say that right? Anyway, the parade is Monday, May 29. It will start promptly at noon. We will be going down Michigan Avenue again. There are packets you can pick up whether you want to be a sponsor of the parade or a participant. And you can get the, you can download them from the web. You can pick them up at City Hall, the library, or the rec center. The announcement about the parade will be on cable. If I have your information from last year and an email was sent, I will be emailing you a packet. So we want to make sure this parade is the best ever. If anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them for you. My second thing is the Michigan Municipal League is putting on a financial, we should have all gotten emails from it. And I would like to go, but I'm unable to because I'm having an advisory board meeting. But I would like one of us to commit to going to this and bringing the information back to us because it sounds like something for the immediate area. So it's going to be Thursday, this coming Thursday, at 5:30 at the Romulus AC, which is 35765 Northline. And I'd like whoever commits to doing that to let me know. All right. The other thing is that the Detroit Free Press is having a grant option for a city. And it's called Create Change in Your Community. They have over $100,000 that they'll be giving away. Now, unfortunately, this deadline is March 1. But if anyone out there, this is about a video or something, some idea you might have to make change or to make improvements in your community. So if anyone has been working on an idea or something and wants to submit to this, I have the information. And, you know, if you know how to write a grant or if you know how to fill out whatever, it might be something you at least want to try, even if, you know, you may not get it this year. But it's something that we need to do. And it's called Create Change in Your Community. And the deadline is March 1 by 11:59. So get with me if someone is interested in that too. And I think that would be it.
Great. Councilman Oden.
Thank you, mayor. Yes, I want to make you aware of the fact that I attended the Tifer meeting of Inkster this month. Very interesting. Then I'm going to do a presentation by the name of Karen Campbell. Center for Cyber Security and Readiness. And it was a very informational presentation. I think it's going to be something that's going to be coming forward to us from the Tifer Board. They did a great job on it. They also did an update on the workforce for the development program here in the city of Inkster. So I thought that was very interesting, worth mentioning. And next I have just a question in terms of what's happening with our roads. Basically, my question is, are we in contact with Wayne County and the state on the various roads? Because everybody know that they're starting to fall apart. Hot holes here and hot holes there. And I know in the past, we've always dealt with trying to patch here and there and so forth. And I'm just wondering if we made contact with the state for the state roads and county for the county roads.
Mr. Bibbitts?
And also, this is continuously brought up at the
And also, this is continuously brought up at the meeting with the elected officials. It was brought up the last time that David Kneecik is there and Commissioner Anderson. The roads are a constant issue that we do bring up with them at the, those meetings.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Mitchell.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
It's been a busy few days for me. My first District 6 Advisory Committee meeting was last Wednesday, and I was really buoyed by the fact that we had a good number of residents to turn out. We did air our grievances, but in the end, we came up with ideas. So I've got a group that's not only has some concerns, but they're willing to work to address the concerns and, and get them off the table. So I'm real excited about that. My next, the next meeting, I'll stop saying mine because it's really the citizens' meeting, but the next meeting of the District 6 Advisory Committee will be on March 15th, here in the Tifa Room. And if you come, come to the back of the building to go into that room. We met for almost two hours, but we had a very, very fruitful meeting, 15th of March, 6 o'clock. And anyone who's interested is welcome to come, because I did have a couple of people that don't live in District 6, but still they're interested in working with me or whoever to get some things done in the city. We had one pastor there who was opened up his, his church for whatever we need to do, and the ideas are just flowing, and I'm real excited about it. Today, I attended the Greater Metropolitan Association of Realtors' Elected Officials' Breakfast. It was very well attended, and I did have an opportunity to network with some realtors. Inkster is getting back on the map, because everyone who talked to me wanted to know how they could help Inkster. And we all know that our, the life of a city is this tax base, and that means housing. So I was very, very impressed by what they want to do with the City of Inkster, so I'm gonna come and do workshops to help people learn how to stop renting and start buying. So it was very fruitful for me today. This past weekend, I went to the Elected Officials Academy so that I could learn more about what my duties and responsibilities are, and it was very exciting. I came back with lots of good ideas and a willingness to continue to learn, because that's only the first step that you can take. I did, too, visit, I know you all watched at Middle Belt and Carlisle, a building being built, right? It's called Qualiff, and it is a home for veterans. And basically, the home houses veterans who were homeless. Now, they do have criteria for those people, and it is a coed building. It's a beautiful building, well done, well decorated, and the living facilities are beautiful. They did share that they have five vacancies, and they want to be able to serve veterans of our armed services in those, in that building. And I think it's just wonderful that we have people who care enough about our veterans, especially the homeless veterans, because you know, it's, it's crazy. You know, they come back and they just wind up everywhere without any support. So I'm going to leave these brochures and some applications here, so that if you know of a, of a veteran who needs some housing, please take the time to stop by and visit. They're very open to showing you around and making sure that you see what the facilities are like and doing something good for those who have protected us. Because every time I think about the fact that this is probably the only country in the world where there's never been a war fought on its soil, then you know we, we owe these men and women a lot of gratitude. So please, make sure that you take at least a brochure so that you can learn a little bit about what they do. And that's it for me.
That's it. All right, thank you. Before we go any further, we want to acknowledge our elected officials. We have Judge Wanda Evans in the house. Do you have any words for us, Judge Wanda Evans?
Thank you, Mayor Nolan, for allowing to me. I just want to say thank you. I would be remiss if I came into your meeting today and not say thank you for all your support, because I've always come in the past asking for your support. You did support me. I won my election, and I want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you. We got State Representative Joel Jones. You have anything for us?
Good evening, mayor, council, administration, citizens. Really, just a few updates. I know some, some issues that came out is, we're trying to work to get the legislature and the governor's office foilable. So we just want to make sure that we're being transparent to the people that we represent. Besides that, the other individuals out there in Lansing are, are working to repeal the income tax. So the issue with that is gonna put immediate budget in, in our, in our, in our budget. And it's really, a very large hole, and it's not any solutions available at the, at the current moment that those folks, they're even split on what's the proper way to kind of replace that hole in the budget. So that's where we're at right now. So I make sure I keep y'all updated with that. But I was very excited to see Councilwoman Mitchell and Councilman Chisholm this morning at the Michigan Realtors' Breakfast. I just want to say that Inkster was represented very well there. And, you know, if y'all ever need us for anything, feel free to reach out. Jay Vian's here tonight, the gentleman that I gave you all his phone number last week, so if you need anything, feel free to call him. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
We just, we just need an Inkster app. We talked about that.
All right, we're Councilman Chisholm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hello, everyone, and I just wanted to say I did also attend the Michigan Municipal League Weekend with Councilwoman Mitchell. And it was very informative, and you'd be surprised, the capacity that our administration is operating at. I like to compliment them and give them a hand clap, because the amount of questions and the questions that were asked by other persons who have been in office for so long was, it, it's just unimaginable. It's unbelievable. And it's really, going to these sessions and everything like that, is really informative and educational, educational. And, you know, I appreciate that it's something that we have to go through so we can continue moving the city forward. Also, for low-income persons who need their taxes done for free, those services are also offered at St. Clement's Episcopal Church on Mondays and Wednesdays between 6:00 PM and 9:00 PM. And, like I said, that has started. And I believe the low income is considered under $57,000 and below. And last but not least, I would ask that you keep one of our planning commissioners, the vice chair of the planning commission, Mr. James Garrett and his wife Dorothy Garrett in your prayers, and keep the family lifted as they are preparing to bury their son. The vigil is tomorrow at Chapel of the Chimes for Gregory Garrett at 6:00 PM. Ewing will be from 2:00 to 7:00, and the funeral services will take place at St. Clement's Episcopal Church on Wednesday at 11:00 AM. The family hour is at 10:00 AM, and he will be interred in Ypsilanti, I forget what cemetery, but there will be a procession and then a repast to follow. Thank you all.
Thank you. Mayor Pro-Tim Williams.
Good evening. I'm gonna start off with some updates. Upcoming events, the Wayne County Treasurer hosts, hosting a Property Taxpayer Assistant Saturday. Treasurer Eric Sabree has established four taxpayer Saturday sections in February at a very variety of Wayne County Community College district locations in order to help those at risk foreclosure, helping them stay in their homes. Treasurer has arranged to have the, of his office and alliance, alliance partners to help taxpayers at risk of foreclosure. Remaining meetings will be held at, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM on the following dates, one of them was just past Saturday, just passed. Next one would be February 25th, Downtown Campus, Frank Hayden Community Room, 1001 West Fourth Street, Detroit, Michigan. For further information, please contact the treasurer's office by phone at area code 313-224-5990, or by email at taxinfo@wayncity.com. If you have any issues with your taxes, Wayne County, they don't, they don't want your houses, they want to work with you so you can manage to stay in your houses. On February 8th, I went to a seminar with the DPW Director Jerome Bibens, and found out a lot about our infrastructure. I learned to have some more respect for Jerome. You wouldn't imagine the things that he has to go through, or the, the whole department has to go through in order to keep our streets safe from sinkholes, infrastructure failures. And went today down there, and it was very interesting, very educational, and I was like, I don't know if I could do what he does. And I'd like to say, Jerome, to the whole staff, thank you. Guess I have nothing else more to say, but keep shopping Inkster. Thank you.
We had Pastor Oldman came in after we finished public participation, so of course we're not gonna let her talk. But I'm gonna read, attempt to read her announcement. Scholarships, Mother's Pantry.
Well, scholarships are available now, including students in Inkster. We know our school districts are spread it, but if you live in Inkster, we have $1,000 scholarships, just need to see you.
Oh, you're giving away money? That's wonderful. Okay, they will see you. Yeah, do we have to be? Oh, high, oh, okay. High school seniors come see you for scholarships, okay. All right. I'm glad we got the memo done. Transparency is important in any government, and anybody has a question, we will try to respond to it. You may not like to answer, you may make up your own facts and change it, but we will respond and give you the information. If everybody does not know, the former charter, the charter was in effect last fall, just simply says as an elected official, you can't be in default to the city for any water bill or property taxes. That's all it says. And the vote that this council took was only to have everyone up here checked to see if we owed the city any money. We didn't sing out anybody, we didn't put anybody off, because we don't have the pot. Well, actually, there is removal processes, but we didn't remove anybody. We had everybody who was serving checked to see if they were in default, and one person was in default. So that's what it is. You know, it was the charter, we didn't write the charter either. You know, charter's 52 years old. So I understand that nobody up here do anything but check and see if we're abiding by the charter, and that was it. It's been a rough week. Obviously, you heard Mr. and Mrs. Garrett's son passed. We also had Carrie Wallace, who lived in Inkster on Rosewood, she's 47 years old, she passed. Went to her funeral on Saturday. She graduated same year I did, went to Bishop Borges High School. Just kind of shook me up when people younger than you start leaving here. It's, it's, it's crazy. And then we had Fleta Fleming, who was the, the chair of our charter commission, her father passed, Loma Shaw. Now, the good news is he was 101 years old. So he got a chance to live a beautiful life, and we're looking forward to celebrating his life this Saturday. But we just want to let everybody know, we will be doing a proclamation for Mr. Shaw and, and present that to him at his funeral, you know. And I don't, yeah, he was the grand marshal in our last year's Memorial Day Parade, you know. So I don't have anything else. We'll look forward to seeing everybody at the next city council meeting. Most of our German support. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Close nay. Get past your homies.